I'd like to start legislation to be discussed in the pre-meeting conference, City of Utica, dated December 21st, 2022. We're starting at 6 o'clock. Our first piece of legislation is a resolution authorizing the sale of beer and wine, FX Matt Brewery Company. It's on Saturday, December 31st, 7:00 to 12:30 a.m. Any discussion? Discussion is closed. Let's move to resolution ordinance number two. This is an ordinance that requires a stop sign on Ontario and South Street, four-way stop. Is there any discussion on this piece of legislation?
Yes, I'd like to talk about this. I know last week when this came up at a last meeting, I wasn't totally sure where the boundaries were. After the meeting, I did research. This is in my area. So I sent you guys, no matter what we do, we need to pass this tonight. Okay? And so I'm all for this, and I'd appreciate everybody to support it. I don't want to see us going back and forth over stop signs that are already up now, and I'd like to, I'd really consider it. I hope all you guys support this tonight.
And the stop signs are up in the intersection, correct?
They're there.
Okay. They are there.
They've been there since Monday, or actually, they were there at the end of last week, I believe.
Absolutely. All right. Councilman, I just have a couple small amendments on it to make it more succinct with our city code, if possible. The first part, to rescind the specific section, Ontario Street and South Street, southeast corner, southwest corner, and northwest corner. That is in our city code. There's a specific documentation on it, and it has to be removed specifically. Secondly, the South and Ontario four-way stop is fine. We just need to reaffirm it. I understand that the ordinance is not there, and we can't find it, so reaffirming would be good, if you would be so kind to consider an amendment on those parts.
So you're saying, because, so I went over this with the clerk, and from 59 up, we can't find any legislation, but there's a good chance that the legislation, she explains to me that the books go back to the 1800s, so there's a good chance between 59 below to 1800, the legislation is correct. There is, there could be legislation. So either way, I don't care what we do, I just want it passed, and I want the signs up. I think it's just redundant over what it is. I mean, basically, what you're trying to say is, it's in 360, but we can't find the legislation, so we want to put the new legislation in to make sure it's there?
Well, the 360, our city code is a reference of laws. We can't find the original ordinance that made this law. But we're not, don't forget, Joey, we're not amending ordinances, we're amending the section of our code. So that's, this is the section. It doesn't say ordinance number 124 back in 1935 we're amending, but we're, of course, we're amending the city code. And that has to be updated and more as specific as possible at all times.
Okay. I don't, myself, is like I said, rescind, rescind, reaffirm, I don't care what we do, it needs to be passed.
I'll read until the record is amended. I hope everybody supports it. Okay? Thank you. Our next piece of legislation is Commissioner Deeds, Seawat, on seven...
Is that her full name, or is it Seawat too? No, Seawat too, I mean.
Do you know that person?
I don't know.
Clerk, do you have your driver's license? Is that...
She works here at City Hall.
She does?
Okay.
Say, 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 say. Okay. Any discussions other than the name on this piece of legislation? Okay, let's move to the next piece. Sponsored by ILO and Councilman DeBrego. Councilman DeBrego, what would, do you have a summary of this legislation, or what would you like to do with it, sir?
I want to put it in committee. I spoke to the administration. They got some other projects going around that area, so I'd rather hold off on making a one-way street right now.
Okay. Get it through to committee? For on resolution number five, Commissioner Deeds, Alma Music, 922 Lanson Street. Any discussions?
She also works here.
She also works here too? Very good. If the council doesn't mind, the next two pieces require a Thursday rule. Everybody okay with that, to entertain it within our pre-conference meeting? Very good.
Where are they?
Number six and number seven. You don't have any, Joey?
Oh, we're sorry.
Number six is sponsored by Councilwoman S. Last Friend. Would you like to give us a summary of this legislation?
Yeah, so this is just standard, re-entering into the standard IMA with the land bank. This is the Greater Mohawk Valley Land Bank, of which both Commissioner Thomas and I serve on the executive committee. It's pretty boilerplate kind of stuff. We're just, you know, re-authorizing our membership in the land bank. Commissioner Thomas, do you want to add anything to that?
No, it's pretty much that simple.
Right. They've amended, the inter-municipal agreement itself has been amended a little bit, so that in order to save us from having to continually renew, that we will automatically renew every three years unless, you know, so sort of the default is that we renew unless we wanted to pull ourselves out there and amendment in there. And I've written this resolution for that. So I would like, I'd like to get it through tonight if we could. It's just pretty straightforward, and just our membership in the land bank, and, you know, like I said, the commissioner and I both serve on the executive committee.
Is everything written, guys, everything written properly? Did you guys have a chance to prove the legislation? Anybody?
I just got this today.
Okay. Is it possible, of course, that this legislative be written properly, and Brian's good with it? Brian does the land bank, and I have no issue?
Right.
All right?
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty boilerplate language that all the municipalities who participate in the land bank use.
Any issues, corporate counsel or department head, Brian Thomas?
Okay, great. Thanks, everybody.
Our next piece of legislation, ordinance number seven, Councilwoman Friend, Eastwood and Crestwood, northeast corner of Crestwood.
Crestway, Crestway.
Crestway, I'm sorry, I keep on saying Crestway. Crestway, we need a stop sign there.
There's no stop sign at Crestway and Eastwood. Do you got, would the Crestway contingents like to weigh in on this subject? Well, there are only two of you. I know at previous meetings, we've had approximately 23 people in the meeting, but...
I, while I don't have an issue with you putting a stop sign there, I did want to mention, for anyone listening, and for us in general, which I'm sure you probably already know this, when a road like Crestway tees off at Eastwood, you're legally bound to stop anyhow.
Right.
Already.
Right.
So that's why there was no stop sign there, because you have to stop anyhow. And I just wanted to mention for everyone listening, if we start popping up stop signs on tees, that we need to remind people that where they aren't there, you still have to stop. So if you see a stop sign at one tee and not another, so I'm just throwing that out there.
Right.
If it creates any confusion.
Do either of the residents of Crestway have any objection? Should we put one up there?
It's already a stop.
I know. I get that point. Should we add a stop sign, is my question.
I think she's doing it more for noon than anybody else.
It's six and one half dozen the other. Outside the scope of Crestway, though.
Yeah, yeah.
If people start seeing stop signs at tees and not at others.
I see your point.
I want to make sure people still want to stop. But I don't have a problem with that. We're already stopping.
I don't either. I stopped there, too.
Yeah, right.
My dog will be appreciative of yet another post to stop at on our walks in the afternoon.
I think it'd be less of an issue if you guys contained your wild parties that I'm hearing about happening last weekend.
Especially right down at that end where that stop sign is, Mr. Phillips, I believe.
Yes.
If there's a house right at the end of Crestway, that's really the problem.
No, but in all seriousness, though, people are legally bound to stop at a tee anyhow. That's the only thing I actually wanted to say. It had nothing to do with us.
Genuine question. Do you think that it lends to confusion if we put stop signs up at some tees and not others?
I do. I do. I don't even know. Is there one at the other end of Crestway right now?
We have several. The reason why, Mr. President...
It's a reminder at this point.
The reason why number one is a reminder, number two, the younger drivers.
Yeah.
They're not astute to the law as good as you are, and as good as the people here. So I would tell you, on many occasions, I receive vehicular confrontations of these young drivers.
Right, they're like, there was no stop.
There's no stop? Why should I stop?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're just making it easier for them.
Also, I do get a lot of constituent comments in general about that neighborhood, about too many people driving too fast.
Yeah, people have asked me about it as well.
Through that neighborhood, right.
So I'm not objecting to it. I'm just letting, I'm just throwing that out there that...
Yeah, yeah, doesn't hurt.
You know, we already did have to stop there.
Right.
You know, by law.
Right, right.
Any additional discussions? This is an ordinance. Unanimous? Very good. We also have some pieces coming out of committee. Is there any, well, I'll go for the ones in 17, 18, and 19. They're just housekeeping. The sign's already up, but there's no legislation in our city code.
Okay, hold, slow down. 17?
18 and 19, I like to pull them from committee. Again, it's just housekeeping.
The only thing I will say about 17 is that you actually have to make a motion to reconsider that on the floor. Other than that, there's...
I don't have 17.
I have no issue with the ordinance.
Mr. President, are you okay with that?
Oh, I see.
I'm looking for the 17, the dog.
It's toward the back.
I'll see, I'll see committee the whole thing.
Yeah, so 17, and the 18 dated 12/7, correct, Mr. Miola?
Correct.
And 19 dated 12/7, correct, Mr. Miola?
Yeah.
So which one do we do?
17, Councilwoman Clausmo Testa would like to...
You can't make a motion to reconsider an ordinance at the same meeting, so it never got placed into committee. You've just got to make a motion to reconsider that one.
Yes.
So you're talking 17, dated 12/7, we're going to reconsider?
Just introduce it.
Okay.
That's the intersection, where the steps, is that yours?
Yeah, it's just homework, it's just housekeeping, because they're already up. There's just no legislation for it.
And then what's 18?
18, same thing, housekeeping.
Reconsider?
Signs are up. No, that's just coming out of committee.
Okay.
18 and 19 are just coming out of committee.
So 17, 18, and 19 were taken out?
Yep.
I just...
All right. Because we didn't have a committee to hold, Mr. Brango, would you like to run, or do you want me to continue, sir? Okay. Is there any pending legislation that the council would like to move from committee or bring into discussion, pretend this is like slash committee to hold, I guess? Okay, I guess it's really quiet. Mr. Brango?
Yeah, obviously, we have all these amendments here in front of us, beginning with, I believe, ordinance number six, all the way through to, who knows, the second page, I guess. What are we going to do with this?
Mr. Councilman DeBrego?
All these ordinances that are here, the definitions, what do we plan on doing? Don't we have to make a move here as far as the moratorium?
At this time, our moratorium is granted for how many days we left, we have, until January, the end of January, I think?
Do we make it 90?
Yes.
Okay. So we have time on it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is there any other questions, Councilman DeBrego?
Nothing else is coming out of committee, correct?
As far as...
Nothing else is coming out of committee?
I'm good.
So, one second here. What is going to be our plan going forward with this?
Well, I like to have an opportunity for the council to discuss the amendments, so everybody understands, both sides of the amendment.
So we're going to, are we going to schedule a committee of a whole meeting?
Councilman DeBrego, are we going to have a committee of the whole June, January 4th, sir?
Well, we already have one scheduled, so I'm sure we can fit it in.
Okay.
But we need, this needs a lot more than...
We have one scheduled on January 4th to discuss my ordinance about apprenticeship training, and I do just want to, in general, say that's likely to be a meeting that's, there's going to be a lot of people who want to say a lot of stuff.
Right, so we need to have a separate meeting.
I agree with Mr. De...
We need to have a separate meeting on this, because this is, listen, my head's not going to be spinning like it's been for the last four months. We need to get this done, and we need to get it done right. Okay?
It's my understanding that Corporation Council and our council are maybe going to put something together for us, so we can at least look at it and vote on it. I know there was some amendments that were accepted, and there were some that were not accepted by both our council and the city's council. So I think maybe if they could give us a proposal or something to go by, because we don't actually know the laws, they do, and then we can just put it in one packet, and then we could discuss it. Sure, I'll call it special meeting, but I don't want to call it if it's not, if they're not, the package is not ready. So once I know the package is ready, then I'll call the meeting whenever, you know, whenever it's ready.
Stephanie, do you have enough time to, I guess...
I provide my comments to the judge, so ultimately, if he's going to put something together, I'll look at it after. But I've provided my comments to the judge, and we've gone over, you know, where we both stand on the event.
I don't quite understand, Mr. DeBrego, what you mean by like a packet. You mean of the legal advice around this?
Well, well...
I mean, we've gone around the mulberry bush on this a number of times. We have the legislation. Let's vote on it.
Yeah, but isn't there a discrepancy that, you know, that they said is not exactly in proper form? So I just want to make sure it's in proper form.
Right, but we've already argued about that. So, I mean, we could just argue about it again, or we could vote on this.
I think we should change it first to the proper form, and then discuss it. Because if it's not legal, why are we even going to vote on it, if they're saying it's not legal? That's, that's, that's only, that's my opinion, but if you want to do it, fine. I'm okay. Want to bring it out, bring it out. Isn't that a song? Bring it out, bring it out.
I'm still revisiting the question time. The neighborhood retail part of the whole thing does, it concerns me to make red tape for any business who does want to open up retail. If Utica Vintage Club, I know people who want to open up flower shops, and there's a lot of business. We need more retail in downtown, and to make that red tape, that concerns me. So that's one of the things that just, I think we should revisit and have more time on, if we have it.
All right. Let's take in consideration the email that our corporate council and probably additional discussions with our judge on those amendments, and then we can go from there. Okay?
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, absolutely.
So we are going to have a separate meeting to go over it one more time?
No, that's another question. Does my colleagues prefer to have an extra half an hour? We can start the January...
It's going to be, Frank, this is...
Meeting at 4:30, if that needs.
I would say that we do, these are separate meetings.
Separate, this is...
January 11th.
Yeah.
All right, so you want to dedicate January 11th for zoning?
We could do one on January 11th for this, all this stuff that's in relation to the zoning.
We can go through each amendment, we can go each, go each ordinance.
Or whatever time we got left from January 4th, we'll see what we can work through.
We could start and then finish.
We could, but we're not, we're going to use up all the time on January 4th. We really are.
Okay. Well, if there's extra time.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't forget, we could discuss it in our pre-meeting conference as well, because there is now 6:15. We may be, not much legislation, so we could discuss it then as well. So we could start the process. If we don't finish it, I'll call a special meeting. How's that?
Sounds good.
All right.
Are there any other discussions?
Before we close, just one more.
Mr. President?
At the last meeting, we requested that I speak with Bowers to have them come in. I did speak with them at length. This was, I don't know, a week and a half ago, it was a couple days after the meeting. They do express interest in coming in, but they couldn't do it by today. So they're going over their properties, and I requested that they give a roadmap update on each of the projects, so that from beginning till now can be explained, whatever ins and outs those may be, and then give an update on what they're doing to move those properties forward into the future. And they stated they wanted to take photos, et cetera, and actually put together a presentation, and said they'd like to come to a meeting in January. So I'm just giving an update. That's why they're not here tonight, because I stated I'd call them for this.
Did they have a preference on which meeting in January, Mr. President?
I'm going to sync back up with them next week, see how they're doing, and just, if we want to do the first week of January, that's fine, but whichever, I'll notify the council.
Very good.
All right. And that'll be a guest thing at the 7:00 p.m.
In the 7 o'clock meeting.
Yeah, it'll be a 7:00 o'clock meeting thing. It won't affect any of the committee meetings you guys are talking about.
Councilman DeBrego, would you like to say something?
No.
Come on, you're good.
I'm in agreement. I talked to the clerk, and they just couldn't come in at the time we wanted, but that's great, as long as they have something in hand to see what progress they're making. That's what I want to know.
Yeah, I would particularly ask that they have something to hand out to us that is a reference sheet of each one of their, some sort of a spreadsheet, or however they want to organize it, or, you know, use Canva, do however.
Maybe they can give us the status of each development project.
I'd like to have something to take away.
Yes.
All right.
If possible.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Any other discussions? Okay. The pre-legislative meeting is closed, and we have some leisure time until our 7:00 meeting.
Cool.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, colleagues.
First, 2022, 7:03. We want to call this meeting of the Utica City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ayalo, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Irvin, Beatrice, Williamson, Classimo, Testa, De Brango, Gleamey, all present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Clerk. Apparently the phones are ringing off the hook tonight. All right, the first order of business this evening is the minutes from the previous meeting. They've been posted to E Code 360 for everyone to review. Would the council like to make a motion to accept and dispense of the reading?
I'll make a motion.
Second from Miola.
Yes.
Any opposed from dispensing of the reading of the minutes? Okay, the minutes have been accepted. They are posted for the public and any administration or council member to review. Next order of business this evening is public hearing. We have a public hearing on the following ordinances. Eighteen through twenty-nine, which are ordinances amending Chapter 214, 214-337, 297, Section 297 definitions, two twenty-nine, one twenty-five, table zoning code. Two twenty-nine, one twenty-five, use table C, neighborhood retail, two nine, two twenty-nine, one twenty-five, use table C, commercial smoke shop. Two twenty-one, twenty-nine, one twenty-five, use table D, automotive zoning code. Two twenty-nine, one twenty-five, use table D, automotive. Section two twenty-nine eighty-five, adoption of amendment zoning code. Amendment to Article eleven, supplemental regulations, zoning code. Two twenty-nine, three six one, zoning code, adding neighborhood convenience store. Proposed ordinance thirty-five, amending zoning code section designations, and proposed ordinance one, rescind and replace Chapter two dash twenty-nine zoning. We have one person signed up this evening to speak on behalf of those amendments. Chuck Marshall, please come forward. Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Good evening. I'm Chuck Marshall from Stewart's. I last appeared before this body in October. At that time, I took upon myself at the request of the council to send approximately two hundred and seventy-five notices to adjoining neighbors and neighbors on a petition against the proposed Stewart's at Genesee Street and Woodlawn. To date, thirty-five people have looked at those QR codes. We think that of those thirty-five, nine members of this body were the ones who accessed the code just based on the timing of the access. We're very concerned about the ordinances, particularly those ordinances that affect the NMU, which is a neighborhood mixed-use district. Whether the gasoline station or convenience store definition, where we land in that creates a gray area. And I would ask that any amendment or any legislation passed include an amendment that addresses specifically pending applications. And we ask this because since 2014, Stewart's has been an applicant or a business operator in the city. We've done so without code violation, without neighborhood complaint. And while we've been doing that, and again, I'm a big proponent of living my life on the public record. the public record, our competitors have sued the city, purchased land surrounding our adjoining stores to prevent expansion in the Mohawk Valley, and moved their offices out of the city of Utica to the town of Marcy, while Stewart's has moved our regional office from Ilian into the city over on Bag Square. I'm also concerned about the commentary, and Councilwoman Friend and I have had these exchanges, again, for the public record. These are my email exchanges with her and along with text messages. On the talk of the town, she cited that the variances Stewart's were receiving were minor variances. She did this at minute 4:37 and minute 21:40. She also went on to say at minute 17, what Stewart's is doing is lawful, and is now accused Stewart's of spot zoning, and it's obtaining of variances at last night's meeting. We're concerned about this because spot zoning is an illegal activity. It's actually an activity only a legislative body can entertain, and we're concerned about the process going forward. So again, when a business comes to your community and makes an application that's lawful and acknowledged, we think that that application should be seen through, and if people want to challenge it in court, that's the ability of those people withstanding, but to change the rules mid-game is, you know, I hate to use the word fair, but it's certainly anything less than that. That's it.
Are those the floor?
Yeah.
Hey, please provide those to the clerk. There'll be no questions. This is a public hearing. Thank you. Thank, yeah, no, it's fine. Thank you. There are no other people signed up to speak on behalf of the ordinances during the public hearing, and the public hearing is now closed. Public comment period is the next order of business. We have no one signed up for a public comment period. Next order of business is coming up to guests. We do have a guest this evening that I've entertained bringing in. They're on the news, and I saw them practicing at the Blue Sox Academy. This will be short and sweet for all the council members. I know it's bringing the sign of you guys, but it is the Utica Cricket Club, and I'd like to invite Sam Famalaro to the podium to describe what they've been doing, what the membership looks like, how they've been practicing, and also talk about what the cricket field looks like now that there is a real cricket club in the city of Utica. So, Sam Famalaro, you have the floor.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. First of all, cricket is the second most played sport in the world. We don't know that because it's not really here, except in big cities. We have a very, very volatile community. There are a lot of countries, baseball don't exist, it's only cricket. So I think this is something, you all got a pamphlet, we're looking to try and get a public field made. A cricket field is basically flat, legitimately flat. It's marked out. The only thing that is any type of a fixture is what they consider to pitch. That is 76 feet by 12 feet, two inches dredged, and then all we need is baseball fill, and then we got a cricket field.
All right. You want to describe your practices, what you've been doing, membership and so on.
Okay, there is no fee for membership. Everything is free and open to the public. It is coed. You can bring anybody you want with you. Want to bring your kids, bring your kids. We've got enough equipment so everybody can be protected well enough. Trying to get at least 16 and over, but if little ones come, they come with their mom or dad, that's a different story. But what we do is we rent at least two hours at the Utica Blue Sox Academy. We go up there and we practice pitching, catching, and batting. Sometimes they let us use the pitching machine.
Do you have anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you. And the council's been provided the flyers that have been distributed for you, the Cricket Club, so if you'd like to check it out, spread the word. This is the first time I've heard personally cricket being actually turned into a club in Utica, so I thought it was really cool to bring it in, spread the word. It was on WKTV a couple weeks ago as well, so this is alive and well in Utica, so spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you. Communications from the mayor. All right, so the only thing I would like to note is there is a memo from the, yeah, this is the Board of Ethics, yeah, the Board of Ethics. It's been distributed to the council. They did not ask me to read this, but just that the council note that it's been accepted and filed with every council member in the legislative branch. Thank you. Reports on the city officers. Chief Hakersaw.
Just that during the holiday season, I encourage everybody to make sure that you have a working smoke detector and that you are not overloading your outlets and extension cords, and I hope everyone has a great, happy holiday.
Okay. Deputy Chief Newton.
Wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Corporation Council.
Ditto.
All right. Commissioner Thomas.
Ditto.
Okay. All right, reports from the city officers. Was, I'll note that Marques Phillips was here during the pre-meeting conference available for the council members. All right, miscellaneous communications, I believe it was a cash report this evening.
City of Utica cash report for November 2022 is total 72.648 million received and filed.
Thank you very much. Petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. First District, Councilmember Keiki Ayala, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to remind everybody to keep the sidewalks clear with the snow coming, and then fire hydrants near you, three feet around is, I think, chief, is it three feet around fire hydrants?
Yeah, at least three feet.
Yeah, and just to help out the city and make sure everybody can access that. Other than that, I'm all set tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I go to the Second District, if you guys can still hear me, thank you for coming out with the Utica Cricket Club. It's appreciated. Catch you guys later.
A little louder.
It's all right. It's fine. It's fine. It's really cool that they're doing it.
Very cool.
You guys got to figure out the pattern now every week. Third District, Councilperson Friend. Yeah.
We never know when it's coming.
That's right. Be ready. Be ready with your remonstrances. I think it's unfortunate Mr. Marshall left. I think it's unfortunate that one can't in good faith do what one thinks is right for one's district, for one's, representing one's constituents, without having other people take it personally. I don't hold it against Mr. Marshall that he's working for, he's doing the best job he can by the people who employ him, as am I. And I just think it's really surprising, disappointing, unfortunate that he has to make it personal and come in here and personally attack me and print out our text messages. Oh goodness, what did I say? So, weird. I like Hanukkah because it reminds us that even when you think it's about to get really dark, it might not, and the world might surprise you, and it might stay light, there might be more light in store for you than you think. I like Christmas because cookies, but I also, I like Christmas because of the promise of new beginnings, right, that you can, that the world can offer up things to you that are new, and I like New Years because I always make New Year's resolutions, and I like that idea that we can sort of constantly strive to be, to make the next year better than the last. So, Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and let's all try to remember that that we can all be acting in good faith and take each other to be good faith actors and all that good stuff. Merry Christmas, everybody, Happy New Year, and come downtown on New Year's Eve to the bank, and I believe that the Fire Department and the Police Department are going to be doing their chili cook-off again in the State Building, in the State Office Building Plaza. I'm looking forward to that. That was one of the best parts of last year. So, Happy New Year, everybody, and see you next year.
Thank you. Second District, Councilman Burmaster, you have the floor.
That's a surprise.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really have nothing to add, but I don't do New Year's resolutions because they never hold true, so.
Nice.
But I want to wish everybody a nice holiday, be safe, and enjoy your families. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And even though you figured out the algorithm, I'm going to stick with it. Fourth District and Majority Leader, Councilman Frank Miola, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't know what cricket was until I started Googling it just now, and it looks like a fun sport, and maybe we can get a couple teams together for the city over here, maybe a couple of my colleagues want to go play.
That's pretty cool.
I think we can have a little fun. It's not, it don't look that bad, there's only 75 feet to run, so I don't think we get out of breath that bad, you know, so I think, I think it's a great idea. It looks like some fun. Looks like some fun. Thank you for bringing that to the table. Thank you very much.
No problem.
I'd just like to wish everybody a Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and most of all, please enjoy your family and friends. It only comes once a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Sixth District, Councilman Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just reiterate to everybody, just have a Happy Holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and everybody enjoy themselves, be safe. Just a shout out to our, their DPW, our police and our fire, for all the hard work you do. Seen a great article this morning on Facebook about police officers saving John Arcon, and appreciate everything you guys do all the time, and again, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Fifth District, Councilmember Venice Irvin, you have the floor.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and everybody be safe. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman-at-large, or Councilperson-at-large, Samantha Classimo Testa, you have the floor.
I just want to first wish my son a Happy Ninth Birthday. He celebrated it yesterday. We had a grand old time. I want to say congratulations to my daughter for getting student of the month this month. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and the results, I want to congratulate everybody in the Utica Fire Department, they did a great job with the firehouse lights. The competition was pretty tough, but they just announced that Station 7 came in first place, so they did a wonderful job. My husband's firehouse came in second, which I thought was the best firehouse, but it may be a little partial to that. And again, that's it. Merry Christmas, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Council-at-large and Minority Leader Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy Holidays, everybody, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman-at-large and President Pro temp, Frank Debrango.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I'm, my dad has been in the hospital for a few days. He's home now. He just came home while I was here, and I had family members help him out, so that's a good thing. We'll be able to spend Christmas Eve together. He usually come to my house, and then I go to my son's house on Christmas Day, so a lot of fun, a lot of, lot of food, and, and I think Celeste did it right, on 12:31 Christmas, I mean, New Year's Eve, I know they're going to have the event down there, down here in downtown Utica, and I went last year and they had the chili cook-off, and I just got to say, I'm going to fess up, I did vote for both. Okay? I didn't want to take any sides, so it was, it was a great event, and I'm looking forward to going down there again, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, I just have one quick thing to say, and this is to everyone in this room, council people, department heads, clerk, deputy clerk, Judge Garamone, who's our special counsel to the council, and the whole city as a whole. No. Are you nuts? No, so in all seriousness, if you take away all the pros and cons, all the good reports, all the bad reports, all the politics, what I see all year long is everybody really working hard to do what they feel is what they need to do to make this city someplace everyone wants to live. So for that, I just want to conclude this year and these remonstrances with a thank you to everyone involved with city government, because without all of the people standing this city up and the infrastructure and the city services, it would be a harder place to live. So, we can always do things differently, but everyone's working hard, and it all should be appreciated, so thank you. Merry Christmas, everyone have a Happy New Year, and we're going to move on to our legislation. Thank you. Proposed Resolution Number One is a resolution authorizing the sale of wine and beer to FX Matt Brewing Company, sponsors FX Matt Brewing. Name of the event is New Year's Eve Downtown, December 31st, 7:00 p.m. to 12:30 a.m., which is the next year, of course. Location is Genesee Street from Bank Place to Devereaux Street, New York 13501. Your votes, Miola, Ayala. All right, thank you.
Nineties adopted.
Proposed Ordinance Number Two, intersections for stops required. Before I read this, I'd like a motion to move it.
I'll make a motion to move.
Is Williamson the second on that?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend, Mr. President.
Oh, you can't make a motion to amend, you have to make a motion to reconsider first?
Hold on. Hold on.
This is number two.
This is number two?
Right. It was defeated at the last meeting.
We're not.
We're introducing this.
As a new piece?
Yes, because it was defeated.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so it's on the floor, and prior to a vote, there's been a motion to amend.
Motion to amend the rescind clause, Ontario and South Street, also in addition to that, southeast, southwest, and northwest corner to be rescinded.
You're adding to this.
Yes, although we're striking out the one that's already there, any previous ordinance, because we have to be specific in our book, so both Ecode and our clerk, you know, does it properly, I guess.
Okay.
Our next part would be to reaffirm, strike, replace, south and Ontario four-way stop at each intersection. It's, it's already in there.
All right, so for the first piece, that makes sense.
There's only a three-way stop on that first piece.
No, that's fine. I would, and I could ask Judge Garamone this, but I would like, you cannot rescind and reaffirm because if we rescind, then it's, it's going to be gone, for sure, but reaffirm is not, we need to replace.
Well, it's already there, so you're not replacing it.
Well, it's, it's there in Ecode 360. I know we discussed this prior, it's there in Ecode 360.
Correct.
So that although some people on the floor feel this may be redundant, if we rescind and have a piece of legislation that says reaffirm, and then we later find that it actually wasn't there, it's no longer going to be there. We'll only be rescinded.
That's why we used reaffirm, because we can't find the official ordinance, so. It was done sometime, in other words, Mr. President, sometime in our past, there's a president that actually signed that legislation, that ordinance, or a clerk that actually stamped it, so.
All right, so hang on, I'm going to take the floor back, and just one moment.
Okay.
Judge.
If we rescind this later, if we don't have replace here, if we put reaffirm there, that's not a thing. Actually, we should add two seconds. One, two, seven, zero, and then we are saying what you want. Try to put in two words.
Well, to my specific question, though, we can't have reaffirm.
Basically, Mr. President, it's already in there, so we just have to rescind that one section.
Okay.
My, I'll tell them.
You want to tell them?
My advice is, number one, have an ordinance to rescind.
Got it.
Because I looked at the books, it's kind of filed up, there are more than one ordinance in there.
Correct.
I think, but just have an ordinance to rescind.
Okay.
Then we have another ordinance to do what you ought to have done now, because that'll be brand new, it'll stand alone, and that's where, there will be no question that there is an ordinance that provides a four-way stop at that place.
Okay, all right.
All right, so.
And that's the way it'll be recorded in the record books.
All right, so.
It's easier for the record people.
Yes.
The Ecode people, when you've got one rescind and one is brand new.
Correct.
All right, so here's how I'd like to process this.
That's my suggestion.
All right, so here's how I'd like to process this.
Just a piece of paper, Jeff, that's all.
And I'm offering this to the floor, okay? Make the amendment you were going to make to the rescind piece.
Understood.
And on this ordinance, okay, on this ordinance, strike the whole replace.
Understood.
Hear me out.
Sounds good.
Then, directly after that, make a motion to ordain and read what's in this current replace into the record.
Okay.
And if there's a second for the motion to ordain, and we read that, and it gets voted on, and it's unanimous, and we're all good, then it will be exactly as the judge stated, okay?
We'll make that ordinance number 2A. Is that, is okay with our clerk?
That's fine. That's all, just for the organization anyways.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as you make a motion to ordain and read that after that.
Absolutely.
All right, so the current motion is to amend and add the components to the rescind paragraph, which have already been recorded by the clerk. I would Um, I would suggest a vote on that first, and then make another amendment to strike the replace, okay?
Yep.
Is there a second to Councilman Miola's amendment? Okay, Councilman, um...
Berman.
Yeah, Bermanster is the second. Your votes on the first amendment?
Sorry. I apologize.
Okay.
Amendment passed.
Okay, the amendment is passed, uh, can we offer the second amendment, please? Herb, strike.
You want to strike?
Yeah.
Mr. President, I'd like to strike, um, replace, Section two sixteen, three fifty-eight, Section C intersection where stop signs required, South and Ontario, four-way stop at each intersection, sir.
Okay, and extend that amendment, please, to be further ordained?
Uh, to be further ordained, that the proper signs be erected where necessary.
Okay, perfect. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Williamson's the second, please vote on that amendment.
Amendment passed.
Sorry, I'm looking at the vote, you know, biting my tongue. Yeah. All right, um, this, if there's no other discussion, is ready for a vote. Your votes on this ordinance as it sits now, as amended.
Nineties adopted.
Well, we're not there yet, hang on, hold on.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to intersection where stops required to be...
Motion to ordain?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
To be ordained, that's Section two dash sixteen, three fifty-eight, Schedule C, intersection where stops required, be amended to include the following, um...
No, it's, you don't need to amend it.
To add.
Just read it, yep.
To add, South Street and Ontario, four-way stop at each intersection, be it further ordained, that the proper signs be erected where necessary.
Sir.
Okay, Williamson's the second, your votes.
Nineties adopted.
All right. We know stop signs.
Yeah.
Hey, we got it, we got it, we got it. All right, so the next resolution this evening is Commissioner of Deeds, uh, be it resolved that the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds in and for the city of Utica, New York, within the term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Say why? Is there a motion? Miola's the motion, do we have a second? Multiple seconds, I'm going to call Bermanster on that one. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Okay. Proposed Ordinance Four.
Mr. President, my colleague would like to refer this to committee, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion from Miola and a second to refer one-way streets, uh, ordinance number four to committee? Any opposed? To committee. Next resolution, number five, Commissioner of Deeds, be resolved that the common council does hereby approve the following person eligible for appointment to Commissioner of Deeds in and for the city of Utica, New York, within the term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, Alma Mujinik. It's moved by Miola, second by Ayala, your votes. The next resolution, which we need a waiver of the Thursday rule for.
Motion to waive Thursday rule, Mr. President.
Any opposed to waiving the Thursday rule? Okay, Thursday rule is waived for this piece. Um, it's a resolution authorizing the signing of the Second Amendment to the intermunicipal agreement of the GMVLB, otherwise known as the Greater Mohawk Valley Land Bank. Is there a motion? Or Celeste actually sponsored this, is there a second? Second from Ayala. Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, the next piece of legislation, proposed ordinance number seven, which also came in, if, um, the council would like to entertain waiving the Thursday rule for the rest of the pieces.
Motion to waive the Thursday rule for any prior, no, preceding legislation.
Okay. DeBrango's the second, any opposed? All right, now we can get out of business. Councilmember Friend sponsored intersections where stops required, Eastwood Ave and Crestway, northeast corner of Crestway. Is there a second? Second from Miola.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend. I discussed this with Chief Noonan. Uh, I'd also like to be it further ordained, um, that Section two one six three five eight, Schedule C, intersections where stop required, be amended to include the following, Arlington and Crestway.
Thank you.
Colon, northwest corner of Crestway. So I am adding, in other words, for the clerk, for the clerks, I am adding one at the other end of the street, Arlington and Crestway, the stop sign itself will go on Crestway at the northwest corner. Call it symmetry.
Me, Ed, and Brian, or Ed, Brian, and I, whichever way you want to make believe.
I went with, I went with Ed because he's wearing the badge.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, we'll go out and make sure they're put up there.
Oh, yes, yes. Well, what, now that we have, now that we have quorum for Crestway, I thought it was appropriate to go on.
Second on the amendment, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any opposed to the amendment?
Can I get deputized?
Anyone? Okay, the amendment has been made, and thank you, because that actually addresses my concern of the confusion.
You're welcome.
Can we change it to Noonan wins?
Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you.
Anything for Crestway, everybody.
Uh, that's the end of the legislation that was in pre-meeting conference, I know that there's three pieces in committee and also a whole swath of legislation we had a public hearing on, so if anyone would like to pull things from committee, now is the time to do so.
Mr. President, I'd like to pull ordinance number seventeen, intersections where stop sign required.
All right.
To be ordained, amending Schedule two sixteen, three fifty-eight, Schedule C, Hollingsworth and Jefferson Ave, one-way stop, northwest corner of Hollingsworth.
So, is this the one we...
Yes, so you can't, you can't...
Yeah, so this is the one we reconsidered.
You can't pull it out of committee because it's not in committee.
Hey, I, I got it. Um, no, I think, no, it's a good reminder, but this is the one we, um, after all the discussion, we reconsidered, but you can't reconsider an ordinance on the same day.
A motion to reconsider.
So make, make a motion to reconsider this one tonight, we're good.
Okay, I'd like to motion to reconsider the legislation I just read into the record.
All right, so that is ordinance number seventeen, dated twelve one, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a second to the reconsideration of this? DeBrango. All right, and that is Hollingsworth Ave and Jefferson Ave, one-way stop, northwest corner of Hollingsworth Ave, be it further ordained, the proper legislation is now in place.
Now you call for your votes.
Your votes.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to remove from committee ordinance number eighteen, intersections where stops required, amending Section two dash sixteen, three fifty-eight, Schedule C, Rosemont and Mohawk Street, one-way stop, southeast corner of Rosemont, to be further ordained, the proposed legislation be, be now in place.
All right, there's a second to pull that from committee, from DeBrango, any opposed? It's on the floor for a vote.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, I'd like to remove from committee ordinance number nineteen, intersections where stops required, Section two dash sixteen, three fifty-eight, Schedule C, Mohawk Street and Sherman Drive, to rescind a stop sign on Mohawk Street and Sherman Drive, northeast corner, there is a stop, a traffic signal there, like, no, this is just housekeeping, sir.
Second, pull it from committee, that's all I need. Petrus is the second, any opposed to pulling this from committee? It's on the floor for a vote.
Nineties adopted.
Mr. President, um, I'd like to make a motion to pull ordinance number one out of committee.
Uh, dated eleven twenty-one, twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay.
And just to make some updates available.
Correct.
Number one, eleven twenty-one.
Yeah, that's, uh, that is the ordinance that rescinds and replaces, or, the zoning code to update the index.
Yep, yep.
So that it, uh, matches what is now on ECO three sixty. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is any opposed to pulling that from committee? Okay, it's on the floor. Is there any discussion?
It's just housekeeping, actually, right?
Yeah, okay. All right, your votes.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
Um, I just, I just have one more thing.
So you were, are you requesting the floor? Okay. I'll give you...
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I, I just wanted to give an explanation tonight. Um, I will be pulling my name for the rest of the ordinances, um, ordinance six, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine and thirty-five.
I just have a quick, uh, question for order. Are you currently the only name on those?
Yes.
I need you just to go, so this is everything, can you just do the numbers again, say?
Sure, so it's, uh, let's see, six, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-five.
Okay, so they are a block on the cover sheet, so...
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'm giving explanation to the reason why I'm pulling my name as a sponsor on the, on the ordinances submitted to the planning board, with the exception of the index that is vital to the replacement of the original ordinance passed in order to match what is on ECO. When we started this process, the intention was to finalize the moratorium that would expire drafted by the city's Corporation Council, which included convenience stores, neighborhood retail, and smoke shops. And you'll see the attached ordinance, um, that was passed by the council. So it's an ordinance amending number fourteen of April sixth, two thousand twenty-two, extending a temporary moratorium on convenience stores and smoke shops in the city of Utica. And then you'll see the two circled, um, parts to that where it does mention convenience stores, neighborhood retail stores, and smoke shops. Um, then you can go on to the next page. Now, according to the recommendations based on what the Corporation Council has said to the planning board, it has now been deemed there is no sufficient definition for the term convenience stores in the zoning code, other than what is currently defined in the zoning code below. So gasoline, gasoline slash convenience station mentions convenience store in it. The proposed ordinance number twenty, according to the planning board's recommendation, states that the planning board voted to deny the proposed ordinance. The board recommended not adding neighborhood convenience store as an additional use to the zoning code. They further recommended that convenience store be defined in the zoning code as a term referenced in the definition for gasoline slash convenience station. With this new finding, I have been left with no choice but to pull my name as a sponsor from the ordinances in committee, until the city's Economic Development Department and Corporation Council can settle through the mess that has been created with the moratorium and the current definitions and lack thereof within the zoning code. To me, the planning board's recommendations from what was explained to the city's corporation, by the city's Corporation Council, has left a number of unknowns as to what a convenience store actually means in the zoning code and what the moratorium actually covers. On numerous occasions, I have asked for a written recommendation to what legislation would be suitable per Corporation Council, and have yet received anything in over a month, after being promised this body would receive something in writing. With that said, it is unfortunate that the city's Corporation Council has argued against a proposal for a clear definition for neighborhood convenience stores to be placed in the zoning code separate from the current term gasoline slash convenience stations, because even with the term convenience store being defined in the definition section of the zoning code, it does not separate gasoline and convenience stores, which was the original intent, to have it clearly defined in the zoning code. Once the moratorium expires, we will be back at square one, and the council will have exhausted their extension on a moratorium until, according to the city's Corporation Council, after this last ninety days is over. Only with convenience stores is a possible recommendation to now be defined, after well over a year of the original moratorium being put, being put, being put in place. So what was the purpose of a moratorium if nothing has changed? What does a moratorium on convenience stores actually mean in the zoning code? And if neighborhood retail and smoke shops are already defined as convenience stores, then again, what was the point of a moratorium? Until everyone is willing and ready to work with one another, the city taxpayers will continue to suffer because of the lack of cooperation from others, and the council will be left in the dark as to what the zoning and moratorium actually mean. I say this sincerely, for those that have been cooperative through this process, I thank you. That is all.
Okay, so just, uh, there's a swath of pieces in committee now, technically with no sponsor.
Point of information?
What's that?
Point of information, does that, yeah, you were about to answer.
Yeah, right, so, um, just, they, they do still technically sit in committee, um, they weren't, uh, disposed of, so if somebody else wants to put their name on them to keep this, those amendments there, um, that's fine, um, that's, that's where we'll leave it.
Any votes to take, Brad?
And is there any other discussion?
So they remain in committee, but without any sponsor.
Well, so, I'm going to talk to the judge, uh, about this, our special counsel, technically they have no sponsor, what that means, I'm not sure.
It can obviously be sponsored, removed by any other council member.
Can I, I, I have a question, though, I want to go back.
Prior to this meeting closing, I wanted to bring it up in case anyone does legitimately want to...
No, I appreciate that, but can I have a question? So when you read off those numbers, some of them on, the ones that I have, aren't sponsored by you.
Right, I think six was not...
Six is Miola Williamson.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The only ones that I sponsored.
Yeah.
Okay, and then eighteen is Miola.
Right.
And then from there, and nineteen is Miola. Twenty, so...
No.
No.
We're not saying no, like in disagreement, but the, the deputy clerk and the clerk had mentioned to me while, uh, Councilat-Large Klasmo Testee was discussing, that six was the only one that was read incorrectly.
Okay, okay. All right, I was looking at a different eighteen, sorry about that.
Okay, all right, cool.
Second on the motion to close, then.
Like, well, hang on, I don't want to close the meeting while someone's still...
What's the value of keeping these in committee? I've said this before, although not recently, that it is a, it is, we create work for the clerks when we keep things in committee, that we have no intention of acting on.
If you would like to turn that into a motion before we close, that's on the floor, I, you know. For organizational purposes, I do suggest, like, how to make amendments, but I don't want to drive the council, you know?
I think, I think that with the recommendations of the planning board, it just leaves too many unknowns to what convenience store actually means. I mean, and it's going to have to come out with, from Corporation Council, or a city attorney, or the Economic Development Department to sort through this.
All right, so...
So what's your view about whether we should keep them in committee or just...
I'm going to call the floor back, I'm going to call the floor back. If there's no motion to...
I mean, did they already run through the, excuse me?
No, hold on, hold on.
They've already hit a public hearing on it. I mean, it, it does, it does do no harm to leave them in committee.
Counselperson, I, I don't want to leave legislation in committee that has no sponsor. That's almost the same thing, I'm going to talk to corporate, uh, Judge Garamone after this, but I believe that's almost the same thing as, uh, disposing of the pieces. They have no sponsor, they're dead, right? They're dead, right? So before we close this meeting, I would like the floor to either make a motion, or outside the scope of this meeting, I'm going to get a clarification, and they may no longer be in committee.
Mr. President, if I could just say one motion, let's keep it in committee until our next meeting. If any council member would like to take the sponsorship for those pieces of legislation, it'll be up to them. Please give them a chance to sponsor till our next meeting, if the council would invite.
Mr. President, didn't we, in the pre-conference, already schedule a committee of a whole meeting to discuss all this?
Okay. All right, so from the floor, if you guys are going to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Thank you.